All right, got the speakers up and everything here. Calling this meeting to order, the meeting of the South Huron Regional Board of Education is called to order adequate notices required by the Open Public Meetings Act. Was provided on December the sixth, twenty twenty-three by posting the notice with the respective clerks of the city of Lambeville, borough of Stockton, and township of West Danwell. And advertised in the Huron County Democrat and the Trenton Times Newspaper, please stand for the flag salute.
I am ready to leave this to the Bible, the United States of America, to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Andrew Rollt.
Martha Dennis.
Present.
Gina Pichetti.
Here.
Ryan Keys, Eric, Kevin Kowaleski.
Michael Strauss.
Here.
Megan Warner. Ronnie Camarino. Ben Gallagher.
Here. We're going to start this evening's meeting swearing in our newest member, Jen Basser, who's going to represent West Danwell. And Jen, welcome to the board, and I'll let Andrew do the honors here.
Please stand.
Thatcher's going to read the required oath of office for all school board members.
I, Jennifer Bachelor, do solemn swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that I will bear treaty faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people. I, Jennifer Bachelor, do solemn swear that I possess the qualification to prescribe by law for the office of member of a board of education. And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to New Jersey Revised Statute nineteen four one. Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in New Jersey Statute eighteen A twelve one. And that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the beauties of that office according to the best of my ability.
Actually, Jen, if you want to take a moment, your husband and your kids want to come up and get any pictures or anything, this is a great time to do it. If you'd like me to take the photo, I'll have you do it. That, our next item is we will be recognizing our educators of the year for current twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So I will turn it over to Mr. Sudo.
Good evening, everyone. This is truly one of the highlights of the year for our district and for the Board of Education. Each year, the Governor's Educator of the Year Program honors teachers and educational service professionals throughout the state. Whose contributions to their students are exceptional. Staff members were nominated by their peers, parents, and students. A committee was formed for each of the three schools consisting of an administrator, staff members, and a parent representative. Using the following criteria to select the recipient. Exceptional instructional techniques. Superior ability to inspire students of all backgrounds and abilities to learn. Respect and admiration of students, parents, and colleagues. And the ability to foster excellence in education as evidenced by ongoing contributions to the improvement of student achievement and the learning environment. I'm going to be calling up each of our principals to introduce their educators of the year, and we will start first from West Danwell, Mr. Miller.
Good evening, everyone. So our first recipient, Taylor LeBeau, and this is an interesting one, a winner, we've done this before. So, but I promised I would write something new unlike my sixth grade graduation speech. So Taylor LeBeau has been an exemplary kindergarten teacher at West Danwell for the past fourteen years. Professionally, Ms. LeBeau has always been a wildcat. Her enthusiasm and creativity are evident in her engaging lessons and interactions with her students. Ms. LeBeau has served the South Hundred in Schools as choreographer for the musical. Girls on the Run head coach, co-president of the SHREA, and has sat on just about every committee at West Danwell School. Taylor has been an asset to our elementary school teachers as a mentor, a collaborator, and a cooperating teacher for aspiring teachers. For all this and more, we congratulate you on the honor of Governor's Educator of the Year. Next, from West Danwell School, we have Jean Marie Slover. So as a paraprofessional, Jean has been able to enhance learning and transform students in our classrooms. She has supported students, understanding that each student is unique and possesses their own interests, strengths, and challenges. Ms. Slover can often be seen guiding and empowering our kindergarten students. Jean has created a culture around her that embodies our school motto, at West Danwell School, we are kind and caring. Congratulations on the honor of Governor's Educational Support Professional of the Year.
And then next, from the Lambeville School, Principal Canyones.
Good evening. We'll go ahead and start with Ms. Silverman. Ms. Silverman, I could not be more proud of the work and knowledge that she has put into every single day, every single year since I've worked with her at LPS. With this great honor, I have no doubt that she will continue to be a progressive educator with an open heart and continuing to grow. It is many years that I foresee her being an excellent teacher. Ms. Silverman has brought so much to the students of Lambeville, such as her work with the walking school bus and much more. At LPS, it is all about teamwork, and Ms. Silverman is an excellent example. She is a huge part of all of the team that we bring every single day to all of our students and families. Ms. Silverman is an asset to LPS. I am thrilled to have her and continue working with her. Thank you to Ms. Silverman. All right, we will continue with our support specialist of the year, Mr. McClellan. Mr. McClellan has worked at LPS, and he has been one of the strongest paraprofessionals I have ever worked with. I can go on and on about Mr. McClellan. He absolutely has grown in his professionalism, and I could not be more proud. Mr. McClellan supports students academically, emotionally, and socially each and every day, from the classroom to the playground. I could not be more proud of him, and I'm very sad to say, but happy to say, he will begin with us as a student teacher on May first. So I will have a loss, again, could not be more proud, and I continue to believe he will grow as a professional. So I look forward to having him as a student teacher as of May first. Congratulations, Mr. McClellan.
And from the middle school, high school, Jennifer McKnight.
Good evening. So Mrs. Christine Diley is South Hundred in Middle and High Schools Educator of the Year. I've had the privilege of working closely with Mrs. Diley for many years, and throughout this time, I have consistently witnessed her unwavering passion for education and her commitment to student success. Mrs. Diley goes above and beyond to create a dynamic and engaging learning environment that fosters curiosity, critical thinking, and active citizenship amongst her students. Mrs. Diley is deeply invested in the personal and academic growth of each of her students. She takes the time to build meaningful relationships with them, providing guidance, support, and encouragement, both inside and outside the classroom. Her genuine care and dedication have had a profound impact on countless students, inspiring them to reach their full potential and become informed, responsible citizens. Her passion, expertise, and unwavering dedication make her eminently deserving of South Hundred in Middle and High School Educator of the Year Award. And Mr. Tom Bill cannot be here with us tonight. However, I would love to just say a couple of words as well about Mr. Bill. Mr. Bill demonstrates exceptional dedication, compassion, and effectiveness in his role as South Hundred and Student Assistant Counselor, making him an outstanding candidate for this honor. I have been continually impressed by his unwavering commitment to supporting the well-being and success of our students. Mr. Bill approaches his work with empathy and a genuine desire to make a positive difference in students' lives. One of Mr. Bill's greatest strengths is his ability to connect with students on a personal level and create a safe and supportive environment where they feel valued and understood. He actively listens to their concerns, provides guidance and encouragement, empowers them to overcome challenges and achieve their goals. In addition to his direct work with students, Mr. Bill also plays a key role in promoting a positive school climate and fostering a culture of inclusivity and respect. He organizes and leads various school-wide initiatives and programs aimed at promoting mental health awareness and building positive peer relationships. His tireless dedication, compassion, and commitment to student success makes him deserving of South Hundred and Educational Services Professional of the Year Award. Thank you, Mr. Bill.
And in conclusion, I just like to say again, congratulations to all of the honorees. In a week from Friday, all of our honorees will actually be honored at a Huron County Educators of the Year Luncheon, which we're really excited about. They'll get a chance to share that honor with all their other colleagues throughout the county. So again, congratulations.
Okay. Moving to our next item, we will have a report of our student representative, Ms. Reed. What do you got?
Okay, so high school students went to Camp Fairview this past month as counselors for the LPS and West Danwell sixth grade field trip. Where upperclassmen were able to guide students in hiking, team building, and other activities. The talent show was held on Friday, April nineteenth, hosting a variety of performances from across the student body. The South Hundred and Environmental Club attended a youth climate summit on Friday, April nineteenth. High school, middle school band and chorus concerts are coming up, where students will perform a variety of pieces that they have been practicing for the past months. Seniors are beginning to make their college decisions with deadlines landing on dates throughout May, and prom will be held on Friday, May seventeenth.
And we had something special today, right? Well, it was today, it was a big special event.
Blood drive, right?
Right. We had a huge turnout, so we hadn't done that in a while, from what I understand, and thank you to our students and our staff, who did a great job organizing. A great thing.
Okay. Next up, do we have a report from PTO or PTA? Okay.
No, so. Jessica Hartigan, West Danwell, PTO. I just wanted to start with, on Thursday, we met, a group of us met. Group of West Danwell folks in Lambeville and high school, middle school, all around, and we discussed the future of the parent organization. And we kind of decided on the South Hundred and Regional School District PTO. We came up with a mission statement, and this is just a draft of the letter that will go out. And it was also decided that, well, not officially decided, but we kind of came up with allowing every member of the school district to be a member of the PTO as like a pilot. Kind of situation. And then not necessarily do a dues kind of thing, a more like a donation kind of situation, which allows everyone to be, to participate, have access to our membership platform, and have access to the directory. And we're just going to kind of test it out and see how it goes next year, and next year is going to be a funky year anyway, so might as well see how, see how it goes. I do have a copy of this that I can pass around to all of you. And then just like a new structure of how we kind of see it happening. I did a map, people were getting, people weren't picking up what I was putting down, so I kind of created a map in Canva to help visually guide people. So there's way too many copies, but if you each wanted one. There's also a slide deck that, that we presented at the meeting that also will be shared. I had every intention of doing that over the weekend and compiling notes and sending them out to people, but that didn't happen. But I also, I created a new Facebook page, so for the new district parent organization, so moving forward, any communication on that. We hope to put on that Facebook page, and we'll obviously send it out through our membership platform and district-wide, any decisions that are made. But we had, we had a fairly decent turnout, and we had really, really good conversations about what we wanted to continue, new, new traditions that we wanted to start. So I feel really confident moving forward that this is going to be, this is going to work out and excel. And next, we have our PTO Mega Fifty Fifty that is currently happening, the drawing is May tenth at two PM. This is our biggest fundraiser that we do. Last year, the winners won three thousand dollars, a lot of money to win. I'm hoping to hit that goal again. We're off to a really great start, so if anyone would like to contribute, I will be back there after the meeting, so. And then our next kid tonight out is May seventeenth, it was wrong on the news byte, so we'll, we'll correct that and make sure everyone, everyone knows. It's always six thirty to nine PM in the West Danwell multipurpose room. Our next member meeting is Monday, May sixth at seven PM. And then we've just been busy working on Teacher Appreciation Week, where we constructed a sign-up juniors for West Danwell and the middle school, high school that did really, really well. So we'll do a snack day up here, and the PTA, the PTA will split the lunch with us on Friday. And then we'll just follow our same model that we usually do with breakfast, snack day, and lunch, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I just wanted to say, just real quick, I wanted to thank Justice for spearheading the district PTO. And then one other piece I wanted to share, which I'm really excited about, it will also include a high school PTO, which we have not had for quite some time. So there'll be representation at all three levels, so we're really excited about that. And again, thank you for keeping us organized and on task and agenda, and you did a great job in the meeting.
Is there a LAF representative who wants to give a report? Okay. With that. We will move to the correspondence, we did have several letters, those are posted on the website along with the agenda. So that brings us to approval of the minutes. I need a, I need a motion to approve items A and B, the regular minutes and executive minutes from March twenty-fifth meeting.
Come on.
Ronnie, thank you, and a second, please. Second by Martha, thank you, any discussion on the minutes? Okay, this is a voice vote, so we can all vote aye or nay, or abstain if you wish, but all in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? You don't have to, but, okay. Next up, a big item for tonight is our budget hearing, so we do need a motion to enter into our budget hearing for the, this is for the school budget for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year being presented tonight. There'll be a presentation, and there'll be an opportunity for the public to comment and ask questions on the budget. So do you need a motion to end with that? Can I have a motion, please? Ronnie, thank you, and a second?
Second.
Brian, thank you, all in favor? Aye. Okay, the hearing is over.
And before we start off for our educators of the year, you're more than welcome to stay, but obviously, if you have other things to do, you're more than welcome to leave as well. I don't feel like you have to stay till the meeting. All right, so we're going to kind of do a little tag team here on our public budget hearing and presentation. I'm going to do a few slides, and then Mr. Harris, our business administrator, will also do a few slides as well. So when we talk about our budget, we always start out with our mission statement. This is really important more than ever, because we spent a lot of time last year working on our new strategic plan. And obviously, this was something that we looked at in our strategic planning process and was front and center in the work that we did. So I really want to just make sure and remind folks what it is, because our budget should reflect our mission statement. And then our district goals, so each and every year, we have typically five district goals, they're really the district and myself. And some of these look familiar to you, as things we've been working on over the last several years. And then obviously, some that, you know, like goal number five, that's been a big one, and we'll take, you know, front and center starting in September. So it's always good to look back at our district goals and kind of where we are, and at our main meeting, I'll give some updates as far as the progress we made throughout the year on our district goal. And then our board goals, so the board set goals back early in the fall, and that was just to, you know, provide the support and resources to me to implement our new strategic plan. And then determine next steps with our district reconfiguration to maximize educational opportunities with the least disruption to our students. And then what is a budget? It's really a planning tool, it reflects what we value, we have to be fiscally responsible to our taxpayers, and it's also a planning tool for us to help with contingencies and minimize risk. So there could be things that go wrong, depending upon a school year with different things related to facilities or whatever may be. Obviously, we need to build in that contingency into our budget to make sure that we can keep our buildings running and keep school open each and every day. I think it's really important this year to highlight more than ever, and I put a link in there for our strategic action plan. And you'll see when we get into what's actually included in our budget, I've linked it to all the goals within our strategic plan, because that is a driving force and something now. It's a living document, something that we should be looking at continually as we make decisions based on the district. So there is a link there, and you can dig into that a little bit more, it takes you right to our website, the homepage where our strategic plan can be found. So what do we value? So we've talked about this for many years, but making sure that we're providing academic opportunities for all of our students, as well as extracurricular and co-curricular, which I'm happy to say, I think right now, we're providing more activities after school for students than we ever have in the past. Make sure we're developing the whole child, so the academics are extremely important, but also that social emotional support. And then developing our staff for excellence and providing them opportunities to grow professionally with professional development. And then long-term planning, as we look at some of the different categories, academics, we know, we've spoken about increasing student achievement and educational opportunities, and you'll hear a little bit about that tonight when we focus on and roll out our new schedules for next year that we'll be working through. Programming wise, you heard at our last meeting that we're going to be rolling out a new research-based English Language Arts program in grades K to eight, starting in September. FFA programs or Future Farmers of America, we're really talking about different ideas to evolve the program and focus on sustainability. There's so many different directions we can go with, you know, AI, with farming, and looking at a possibility of a new greenhouse, and all different things, wind turbines, solar energy, all those different things. So that's something that's front and center, our enrichment program. So next month, we will have a presentation from PCG on the findings of the enrichment G and T report and review and recommendations moving forward. Then a huge emphasis for us moving forward, and I'm going to get into this a little bit deeper in another slide, is our dual enrollment program. So we really want to be able to provide students the opportunity to obtain as many college credits as they can by the time they graduate. And ideally, the goal would be eventually where students can get a whole year of college under their belt by the time they graduate from our high school. So obviously, that's going to do a couple of things, it's going to give them a head start as they, you know, embark on their college career, and then also save them hopefully a lot of tuition money. You know, as we know, college tuition's are continuing to rise. Staffing wise, looking at district reconfiguration, so part one will be in September with our new elementary school opening up, and then part two will be in September of twenty-five with our new middle school opening. And then facilities, you know, obviously, opening up the new building next year at the elementary, but then focusing on it as well, next year will be, you know, focusing on getting the five A building ready for September of twenty-five. And then continued discussions about our preschool program and facilities, and that will be ongoing over the next several months.
So it begins really in September. As soon as we get back from the school year, we do zero-based budgeting, so we start with all lines at zero, and say, we try to analyze what are our needs? So we meet, I meet with administrators, I meet with technology directors, people services, curriculum, facilities manager, we talk about transportation, everything, and just say, what are our needs in terms of staffing, supplies, capital projects, and all those things. Starting in November, December, then I'll meet with superintendent and start to get an idea of, you know, what are we prioritizing as we move forward, looking at the strategic plan, all of those things to help guide the direction the budget's going to move in. Final budgets are submitted to me from each administrator by December twenty-second of twenty twenty-three, and changes a little bit every year, depending on whenever we go out on winter break. Once we get back, we develop a preliminary budget that we then sit down with the finance committee, and we start to talk about what our numbers look like, what do we need in terms of tax levy, what are we hoping for in terms of state aid? We'll review the final, final preliminary budget in pretty much the end of January and present that to the board, its first round around February twentieth for their work session. We've already reviewed that with the finance committee, usually the Thursday before that. Once we've reviewed that, then we approve the preliminary budget in March, and then it brings us to tonight, where we hopefully approve the final budget. Now again, as I said, we do zero-based budgeting, but there are key factors that don't change from year to year for the most part, staffing and benefits make up a huge part of the budget. Those increases usually can be anywhere, you know, staffing could be three percent or higher, benefits historically have been five, six, seven, eight, nine percent. So anything over two percent, which is what the state mandated tax levy cap is. Additional things that affect the budget are special ed programming, students in district, not a district, extracurricular and co-curriculars, as Mr. Sudo said, we're offering more than we ever have. Just general maintenance and operations of the Just general maintenance and operations of the buildings, transportation costs continue to go up every year in terms of just maintenance of buses. Uh fuel, the replacement of buses. And then what are our ratables and what's our state aid? Those are kind of the things we don't always know year to year. So important terms that we should know for the budget, general fund, general fund is what is determined by the tax levy and the state aid. Uh if we, so this is basically what are the things that uh we are paying for year to year that's outside of grants and those sort of things. Uh next year's budget would be currently, your budget will simply roll it over without any increases to salaries, to insurance, things like that. Tax levy is the total sum raised by the school district after taking out all of their revenues, including state aid. Uh the tax levy is used to turn the tax rate of property owners in each of the cities, towns and villages that make up the school district. Debt service, uh we refer to that as our mortgage, so that's whatever debt we have historically, um whether it's from two thousand one or twenty fourteen. Or most recently, with most recent referendum, that's our debt service. Uh fund balance is what we may carry over year to year depending on spending or if we take in additional revenue. Uh for example, if we sell an old school bus or something along those lines, that goes into miscellaneous revenue for the following school year. Uh or if we're very conservative in how we're spending, we have additional funding from the budget this year, that could be fund balance or surplus. Um now we talked about the two percent cap, there are different um mechanisms that we are allowed to use that should go over the two percent cap without going out with voter approval. One of them is the health benefit budget adjustment. Um we qualified for that last year. Uh we did not take it. It was about ninety thousand dollars. Uh this year, we qualified for another health benefit adjustment. The board is not taking it again. This year is a hundred and twenty two thousand and change. Uh this is something that goes into bank cap, which we'll talk about in just a second. So these are things that would have pushed the tax levy increase over the two percent cap, but the board chose not to uh go to this year. So more quick terms, again, bank cap, bank cap is we have the spending authority, but we didn't use that spending authority. So we're allowed to hold on to that money for future budget cycles. Uh but there is a cap on how long you're allowed to hold on to that, and that's three years. Um so the ninety nine thousand we spoke a moment ago will expire twenty five, twenty six. And then the bank cap from this year will expire twenty six, twenty seven. Um additional things that are budget is capital reserve. Uh so this is money that we take that fund surplus, we put it into the capital accounts. And then we use that for larger projects. Uh recent large projects have been soccer field, track. Uh on security cameras, uh bus cameras, things like that. And finally, equalization rates. Uh this is uh an important one for budgeting purposes. It's the total assessed over total market value, and that is determined by the county. That's not a number that we set, but that affects our tax levy. So again, number of different uh budget items that go into this, staff salaries, benefits, we talked about, special education costs, technology is a big one. Um in terms of always making sure we have the most up to date Chromebooks, laptops, desktops, um subscriptions, internet hotspots for students who don't have home internet. Um custodial maintenance is a general cost that continues to go up each year, just things that we'd like to do or need to do. Uh transportation, we talked to get about again about with bus replacements, fuel costs, things like that. General classroom supplies for teachers, um program supplies to support the curriculum, textbooks, always making sure those are up to date. And then again, the co-curricular and extracurricular activities, then of course curriculum instruction. This is just a visual of where the money goes. Um so you can kind of see regular instruction, special ed instruction. Again, that takes up a big portion. Those are teacher salaries, uh benefits, that's health benefits and dental. Uh and then again, the breakdown for others, transportation, preschool, which is its own budget, but it's still part of the overall pie. Uh operations takes up a significant portion, uh so you can get an idea of, you know, how is the money being spent each year? And then again, just a breakdown of revenue. So we talked a lot about appropriations, our revenue. We get about eleven point five percent of our general fund from state aid. Uh so that's school choice, that's special education aid, that's security aid, that's transportation aid. Uh federal aid makes a very small portion of our budget. You see that number a few know for prior years, it was much higher. That was due to S R funds from COVID grants. Uh that money is now expired, and now we just have our E S C A grants, which make up about one point three percent. As you can see, the tax levy makes up a significant portion of our revenues. Uh but then additionally, we have the preschool expansion aid and then additional items, whereas we have C D A rents. Uh we have fund balance, that get money that we were carrying over from a prior year, uh pay to play and then interest from bank accounts.
So just a couple of things I'll mention, challenges related to our budget. Um as Andrew mentioned, the COVID relief funds expire in September one, two thousand twenty four. So on my next slide, I'm gonna kind of share what we were paying for out of that. And then how does that work where obviously some of those things are really important to us, and we wanted to keep in the budget. So how can we manage that to make sure that we keep them? Obviously, it's two percent tax levy. Um we know that salaries are three percent and health benefits right now for next year, seven percent. So as you can see, when we get our budget numbers, we're kind, we're already in the hole to a certain extent over the two percent. So we have to figure out how we're gonna manage all that. We talked about the energy cost, transportation, and then added district tuition. So for students um with special needs, who we can't meet their needs within the district, sending them to schools that can meet their needs. So when we talk about the S for funding, these are all the different things that we had been paying for over the last couple of years with S for. So not this year, because we got the high impact tutoring grant, but last year, we ran an after-school tutoring program for the second half of the year that we used S for funding. Ed Mentum is a program we use in Apex Learning for like credit recovery, things along those lines, online learning, depending upon the situation for students. Andrew mentioned before hotspot, hotspots, so any students who don't have internet access in their home, we provide them with a hotspot. And we've been paying for that through the S R A, our instructional coaches. If you remember, we introduced them last year. Um they're finishing up year two. They've been a great resource to us, played a huge role in our high impact tutoring, but we were paying for that through our S for funding. M K S, M K S Partners, that's Marine Signor, who we've been partnering with over the last several years on blended and personalized learning. He's a consultant, he's been working with our teachers throughout the district. Some professional development opportunities. We utilized S for funding for the program reviews. So last year, if you remember, we did our special education review. This year, we're doing our enrichment program review. That was all paid for through our S for funding. Project Lead the Way, which is our engineering program. We paid for some of the licensing software and and programming that we need for that program. First Children, so if you remember, two years ago. We'd hired a mental health clinician whose only job and responsibility was to really work with some of our most neediest caseloads of students. And to provide pretty intensive. Mental health therapy along with family therapy for those individuals. So that's something we've been doing for the last two two years. It has worked very, very well. However, we've been paying for that, you know, utilizing our S for funding. Our summer academic program that we've run over the last couple of summers. Some of the different instructional technology software that we've been using. We did updates for iPads for pre K one using the S for funding. And then we paid for our textbooks. If you remember, we're in year two of Reveal Math, so we've we've been paying for our textbooks for Reveal Math. And then we did a pilot with ten teachers for our new E A L O program this year, and we used. S for funding to pay for those textbooks and all those materials. So that's a pretty comprehensive list. Um. So let me go through and talk a little bit about. This budget and what it includes. So first of all, and you'll see I've linked it to our strategic plan. Obviously, we're gonna be opening up a new elementary school. And we know that we had a referendum to pay for all the things that will go into that. But we also know when we get into the building and we're getting ready to rock and roll in August to open up the new building, things are probably gonna come up. Maybe that we missed or didn't think about, and you know, we need to make sure that we prepare for that as far as our budget goes. Maintain our class sizes. So I'm stealing Jane Ellen's thunder a little bit in her slide, but I'll share in this one as well. You know, when you look at our class sizes for next year with the reconfiguration. You're obviously not gonna find this in other places, right? Our highest class is sixteen students at the elementary school. And then you look at what the middle school is gonna look like, uh you know, in our, you know, in between plan for next year with five, six. And then seven, eight, what our class size is gonna look like with our three sections. High school's a little different with electives and there there's no real homeroom. It's different, you know, trying to figure out class size because of the way the schedule works. But you know, I will tell you, as we've been interviewing candidates, and many of them are on our agenda for approval tonight to be hired for next year. They really like. Look at you like fifteen, fourteen, I have twenty eight kids in my second grade class right now. So we're extremely fortunate with our class sizes. If you've been following along, you know that there's some districts that are feeling real pain right now with their budget. You know, I think the one right up the road from us in Flemington with, you know, over a three million dollar cut. And forty seven staff members that are being laid off. That's gonna impact class size, right? There's no way around it. There's many other districts that are in that same boat. So I feel fortunate that right now we're not in that boat and our class sizes are gonna be awesome for next year. We need to maintain our professional development, right? So obviously, you're gonna hear about some of that tonight in our next presentation. You're gonna hear, you've heard about our E L A program, there's training, professional development that needs to go along with it as we implement that for our students. Continued expansion in the preschool program, so we'll have seventy five seats for next year. Um we'll see how it plays out for the following year. But I do want to mention that I think it's important to understand, if you saw that slide that Andrew talked about before, where we have over a million dollars. Um in funding for preschool expansion aid. Because of the fact that we have an existing counselor, an existing principal and other folks that are interacting and working with that preschool program. That means that some of that money can be used to pay for that, those types of services. And what happens is then that frees up additional money in our budget to pay for things that perhaps. If we didn't have that, the S for funds going away, we would have to cut and lose. So I just kind of want to make sure folks understand because that's an important component. We are gonna be continuing the mental health supports. So what we decided was work, first children's has been great. But we talked about budget wise, how's this gonna work with our budget based on what they've been charging us? We decided we were gonna hire someone on our own. So rather than kind of pay the person who's been working with us and then pay the fee for first children's on top of it. You know, as a contract, we decided to ha- uh hire a mental health therapist. Who is actually on the agenda this evening, who's being approved, who will continue to be full-time, five days a week. Which I'm really excited about because we have, as you know, mental health needs even prior to COVID. Are at an all-time high. That's a really important support for our students. So that's in the budget. Our new new E L A program that we've talked about. We've talked about this in the last couple of meetings. We are introducing a theater program here at the middle school and the high school. And I know we have interest. The kids are really excited. We surveyed kids. The teacher who's going to be teaching, it's on the agenda for approval this evening as well. We'll be starting to develop introductory courses at the middle and the high school level with the goal of eventually, you know, expanding that out. And we will also be introducing a fall play, a spring play that also go along with our spring musical. So for some of our students who may not feel comfortable with the singing part of it, but want to act, they're now gonna have different opportunities. And the other piece of it is having conversations with our teacher who is coming from, you know, a um a strong program right now from another district. Giving our students the opportunity to compete, you know, at the theater level and various things throughout the state and and beyond. So we have students who can do this in college, so we want to provide them as many opportunities as we can to be able to do that at the next level. We have over sixty five extracurricular and co-curricular activities, as we mentioned, it's the most we've ever had. This is a big one, the late bosses, right? So you know, it's been, no doubt, had an increase on student participation in our extracurricular activities, whether it's athletics or clubs. So we will continue to run just as we've done at five fifteen every day for our students of late bosses. Home internet access, so again, we want our students to all have equal footing at home, right? If they don't have internet access, it's gonna be an issue with some of the things that we ask them to do. We want to make sure they have it. And then dual enrollment. So I mentioned before, front and center. So I want to click on this link. This is right now what we're looking at. So we have partnered with Rowan University, T C N J, Seton Hall and R B C C. And you'll notice, these are the classes right now for next year that we're planning on. Having dual enrollment. So what does that mean? It means that the teacher who's teaching that course has been improved by the college or university with the syllabus that we have for that course. And that if parents and students elect to enroll as a dual enrollment. And they get a C or higher in the class, they're gonna get college credit for that course. All right, if you look at the list, you'll notice that Rowan University, the majority of the dual enrollments are three credits. T C N J, they're four credits. So the price is a little bit higher, but they're four credits instead of three credits, and then we have R B C and Seton Hall. So we're really excited about this. Again, the goal would be, if we can, to, you know, have students complete thirty credits. Something along those lines by the time they graduate, uh maybe even more depending upon how that plays out. This is really a conversation that we need to have with students starting in middle school. But as they start planning for ninth grade, what is my path? What are my areas of interest? How could I tap into some of these dual enrollment courses and obviously get as many college credits as I can? And we're also, we've been working with colleges and 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 universities to talk about students who may not be able to afford it. And how do we, as a district, support them with our budget to be able to provide those opportunities? So again, when we talk about equity and equal opportunity, we're providing that for all of our students. So make sure that any student who's interested in enrolling in a dual enrollment program will have the access to be able to do it. So you're gonna hear a lot more about this. We're really gonna be promoting this to our parents in the coming months and and especially to kick off the next year. And then parents will have decisions come September of whether or not they want their child to enroll. You don't have to, but obviously it's gonna be there to be able to utilize, which we're really excited about. Our student information system. So this was only year one of Enchors. There's a whole nother piece that we'll be launching next year. Um one of the pieces that we'll be launching is Enchors Classroom. The goal of Enchors Classroom is to really streamline for parents and students, so everything is in one place. Which will mean that for September, as a parent, you will be able to log into your Enchors account. You will be able to see all of your child's classes, and you'll be able to see exactly what's due today, what's due next week, what's due maybe in a month. And have all that information available to you in one place. Which I know right now, we've been using Google Classroom, and that means, you know, parents don't always have access to that. Yes, they can look at the grade book and see what the grade was on the assessment, but obviously they don't know in advance sometimes when that assessment even is. Now they're gonna have that information available to them as we roll that out in September. And then we'll be using some other modules within Enchors internally for our own purposes. Findings of the G N T report, so you'll see in May. P C G will be presenting live in person at the meeting. They're going to make some recommendations. And we'll talk a little bit about what does that mean, not just for twenty four, twenty five, but beyond over the next two to three years. And what does that look like district wide, where right now, most of our enrichment program is geared towards our elementary? We really want to spread that out K twelve and spread it out into different areas like art, like music and different areas that our students are engaged in. And then you're gonna be hearing about, and this is something we've talked about at school and community. Parent Square for a new communication system that we're gonna be using for parents. Again, hoping to streamline communication. That's part of one of our strategic planning goals. Um it will replace School Messenger, which right now, that's the system that you typically will get emails from us or text messages. Um there's a lot of other feature sets. We'll be rolling that out to start the next school year. And there is a mobile piece to it where it really is like scrolling. And being able to see the latest information all at your fingertips because we know that for the most part, that's how folks are accessing information. And then for capital reserve, here are the things that right now we're looking to plan for. So as we open up again our five A building in September of twenty five, one of the things that we've been looking at is. An outdoor fitness course that we could have and utilize behind the building for recess or different activities for students to participate with. Um and we're looking at. A field turf area, so it's easy to maintain, it's universally accessible for all students. Um that is something that we're planning for as well, um that was not included in the referendum funding. And then our courtyard. So if you're familiar with our courtyard right now, um this is from the wintertime, but this is the, if. You're over here, you're near the library, so it's the big courtyard right outside the library. Our environmental club came up with the idea, thank you to the students and Miss Lamer, what if we could develop that into an outdoor learning space? So one of the things that we looked at was really designing it where this is kind of on this end is where the library is now. And this is closer to where we are, but literally what you'll see here, and this is a design, one of our engineers that's been working for the district on the referendum referendum project. Volunteered their time to work with our environmental students, meet with them, get their ideas and then sketch it out. But ideally, in a perfect world, we'd love to have a brand new greenhouse in here that we could utilize for our F F A program. Our greenhouse is at the point outside where we really need to do some upgrades to it. A pa- a paved area for an outdoor learning space, and then there's all kinds of neat little things in here, native plants. There's a wetland pool, um pollinator meadow, all kinds of different things that will play into, you know, environmental science or F F A program. So we're looking at grant funding for that, but then there may be a need for some district funding and kind of what that would look like. As a space that all of our students could be able to utilize throughout the day. Um and then the other piece of it is, we are looking at, we talked about this at the last meeting, athletic field expansion. Um, and then the other piece of it is, we are looking at, we talked about this at the last meeting, athletic field expansion. So as we open up our new five-eight building, the goal would be eventually, hopefully. To be able to have all of our programming for middle school and high school onsite. So one of the things that we've been looking at, and this is a little bit difficult to see, um, but I'll try to. You know, make it as, as big as I possibly can. Right now, this is kind of the corner of the new building. This is kind of the new soccer field is over here. And then there's a little practice area behind the soccer field. We are looking at in the wooded area right now, behind where the school would be. There is the possibility to develop another field in the back. It could be utilized definitely for softball. Um, and also in this area to be able to be utilized in the fall for things like field hockey or boy soccer. Um, so there's a lot of different um, opportunities here that the finance committee has been kind of looking at. And we'll develop a plan of what does this look like? How much is it going to cost? How do we plan for this down the road with the goal in mind? Again, rather than busting students off site, which we've been doing for several years. For different athletics, the goal would be to be able to keep them all in house. So that's something that we'll be sharing more information at. We're just kind of beginning that. Obviously opening up the new five-eight building. And then, um, you know, we've also had conversations about. A renovation to the fitness center here of, you know, developing it, renovating it, kind of giving a facelift, maybe even extending it, making it a little bit bigger than it is now. So these are all the different things we've talked about as possible projects for capital reserve. Andrew mentioned ratables. So this is a slide where you always want to see the arrows going up. That's a good thing. So you can see for all three communities right now, the ratables have increased because that. Um, spreads out the uh, the impact of us of taxes go. Would you say Jim, what did I? Be assessed by, correct. Um. Percentage share. So again, this is not established by us. This is established by the county. The equalization rate. So it shows exactly what percentage of the budget is coming from each one of our communities. And then we've been showing this the last couple of years, but this is the one list. Where you want to finish close to the bottom and not close to the top. And that's the overall county tax rates. And you can see, you know, that West Amwell, Lambeville and Stockton are towards the bottom. And some of our colleagues around Hunter County are much higher than we are. So that's hopefully something that we can maintain. So the board has decided, um, as Andrew mentioned before, not to go above pack. So a two percent increase on the budget. Um, even though I think we had talked before with the health benefit waiver, we probably, probably would have been closer to three percent. Uh, we decided not to do that because obviously we know that our referendum debt is now hitting. And we're trying to be as fiscally responsible as we possibly could. So we are proposing a two percent. Raise in our budget from last year. And then this just shows, just so I want to, you know, bring everyone in the loop as far as how things are progressing with our debt service. That the high school and West Amwell referendum debt will expire in February of two thousand twenty-six. And then that will roll off the books. So we realize right now, things are a little bit higher because we're carrying the old debt with the most recent debt. But then by February of twenty-six, the old debt will roll off and then we'll just be dealing from twenty-six on for the new debt. So with that, before we get to public comment, any questions from the board or anything you'd like to say, Jim?
Um, nothing I'd like to say, but I'll open it up to the board first. If you have any questions. About the budget or if you have any thing that you'd like to say about the budget. The board is satisfied, then I will open it up to the community, just like we do with our, with our um. Uh, our public comment periods. Uh, if you have a question, please come up to the microphone. Just meant, you know, let us know your name and the community that you're from and uh, we will do the best that we can to answer the question.
And right now this will only be on the budget and then we'll have another one for anything else.
Yes. Everybody hear that? We're only taking questions right now about the budget. But we will have another opportunity. Does anyone have any questions? Do we have our online forum open?
No response.
Okay, we have no online questions. Any questions on the budget? If there are no questions on the budget, everybody seems to be satisfied. Um, then I will, uh, I will ask for a resolution to approve the final twenty-two-four, twenty-five budget. And the, using the language that is here in the agenda. Uh, can I get a, a motion to approve that? So move right. Thank you very much. I need a second. A second by Kevin. Thank you. Uh, discussion on that resolution. And in that case, this will be a voice vote, Andrew. Or a roll call vote, yes, I meant to say. And you may, absolutely.
Martha Dent.
Yes.
Queen of the Chevy.
Yes.
Brian Hughes.
Yes.
Kevin Kowalowski.
Mike Mistrapp.
Yes.
Monty Tupperino.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Plan for next year. Uh, next item on the agenda will be a report uh, on the new schedule for the elementary school. For the twenty-two-four, twenty-five school year. So uh, Ms. Lennon, this is Lennon.
All right. Good evening all. I will invite my colleagues, Mr. Miller, Ms. Candace to join me at any time if you would like to. You don't have to, but you're welcome to. And jump on in. Because it is the R year building. So, so we really designed this budget. We've actually been working on the schedules, excuse me, not budget, schedules. Um, for many months, uh, probably all the way back till November is when we really started. To talk about what this was going to look like with the opportunity for. The configuration, but also the opportunity and the implications it has for our curriculum and instruction plan. So when you have a perfect storm like this with a new building that has the opportunity to create a new schedule. Five-six has the opportunity to create a schedule for next year and then we'll revisit what it will look like in five-eight. So with this opportunity, we can look at our programs like ELA. Uh, with wit and wisdom and say, oh, wit and wisdom is recommending ninety minutes. Well, if you already have a set schedule, um, and you already have a set building, it's very hard to change the schedule within a building. Um, with a schedule that's been well established for no other reason. There's many, many pieces that go into it. So there are some things you'll see tonight. Um, it, there are. Generalized um, schedules that are draft form. And then the one thing um, I'll go into a little bit more on is the acceleration block, which you'll see tonight. And the proposal that we have to and our plan to make it successful for our students. So Tony stole the class sizes. So, but we do want to make sure. That um, you all know that to have instruction that meets the needs of all students. You can imagine that it's much easier when you have a class of fifteen. Or twelve, or even twenty-one than twenty-eight, or we had a consultant last week that talked about having a class of forty-two. So nothing that we would ever want to see here, but it does make. What our goals are much easier to achieve for differentiated instructions. It's much easier to plan small groups when you might only have five groups of three and, or three groups of five. For our classes of fifteen. So that is something that we are going to continue um, to shout about. Because we can really, as we say, move mountains with these numbers. This is the schedule that we're proposing right now for pre-K four. That is a recent picture. And so we have a brand new building. So we have a brand new schedule to look forward to. And one of the things that in education we look at, when you look at a school's schedule. You should be able to tell what's very, what's important to the school by what, where's your time spent? And you'll see that there's a common theme throughout this that is a balance of both the social emotional. Learning piece that we know needs to be balanced with an academic piece. And so what we've done with these schedules is really create that perfect marriage of the two. So the most important thing is for everyone to realize, teachers included as well as families. This is a familiar nine period schedule. That's the most important thing is the sense that we. Teachers will be moving through a day that is familiar. Students will be familiar with that. You'll see that there's a focus on our core subjects, English, language arts and math. And that directly rate relates to the time for instruction and student achievement. And then also hopefully to raise our test scores. Uh, there is now a new daily forty-minute acceleration period in grades K through fourth. And I'll go into a little bit more about that. Um, there's built-in passing time, which we've never had before. And what that allows teachers to do is for everyone to move on the same schedule as opposed to a teacher saying, oh. But they were just so engaged and I didn't want to stop them. And then that class may be three minutes late to PE, which is then. The TE teacher says, oh, well, but I didn't get to all of this. And so then that, there's a spillover. So when you have a built-in passing time, it maximizes instruction time because you know. As the teacher, you're going to have this forty-seven minutes or thirty-seven minutes or whatever the period block is. It also gives everybody a little bit of a sense of, you know, I can take a deep breath because I know I have three minutes to move from one place to another. And there's not a lot of rushing going on. Um, so we're really excited about doing that as well. Um, also gives special area teachers the opportunity, if they're moving into classrooms. The opportunity to move from one room to another, as well as um, put away an art project and get set up for the next art project. The special classes will remain the same um, as they have in the past. And again, this all aligns with our mission, our vision and our core values. So there's a lot of words on a page, but I did want to just show you um, what it all looks like in a period, nine period day. Um, as I've realized from presenting this to the curriculum committee, as well as the district parent council. You may never have seen what a master schedule looks like. Um, and I just wanted to show this to you so you can see the different parts of it. Um, we did post it online, so you can revisit it again. But more importantly, and a little bit easier to comprehend, is the next slide, which is truly what a second grade schedule would look like. And so from this slide, you see that we have a heavy emphasis on language arts. That's a hundred and twenty minutes of language arts, which gives us all the time we need for our knowledge building curriculum, wit and wisdom. As well of the new programs that we're introducing for our phonics and our foundational reading, which are foundations and the Hagerty program. We have the same amount of math, the eighty minutes, which is what the reveal program suggests. And so that is the same. And then we will be moving to a consistent science or social studies. We will have four and a half weeks of so- science and four and a half weeks of social studies. So that we'll have both of those content areas consistent in a marking period. Whether we start with social studies or we start with science, different grade levels may start with different subjects depending on what the science curriculum is. It's much easier to study plants and go outside in the fall and the spring. But that will be the consistent um, amongst all of the pre-K four, excuse me, the K four. Here, we're going to talk, I'm going to talk a little bit more. There's a lot of words on these pages. So again, I invite you to, or on this slide to go back and read it. But the purpose, the goals, the data informed decision-making and the focus on ELA and math skills are really. The foundation of the acceleration block. It is dedicated time during the day for students to get that individualized or small group. So the idea is that if students um, receive interventions or support or enrichment. They can receive it during that acceleration block. They're not going to miss a language arts. They're not going to miss a reading or a writing class. They're not going to miss a science or a social studies class. If a student receives intervention or support with ESL. And they're going to need to meet with a small, in a small group with the ESL teacher. That happens during that acceleration block. So it's really designed so that students aren't missing core instruction if they need something more. Same thing with GNT and enrichment classes. Students can meet with Ms. Kubak during that acceleration block to receive specific enrichment services. As opposed to missing one day a week of social studies or one day a week of math. Um, it's really what many schools, districts are doing to be able to meet the needs of all the students. So I'm going to shift a little bit right now to the five-six schedule. Is there anything? Nope. Okay. Uh, pre- the preschool schedule is coming soon. Right now, we're just focusing on what the five-six schedule would look like. Again, many words on the page, but you will see there's a little bit of a shift. We moved to eighty-minute blocks for ELA. And we keep, stick with our eighty-minute block for math. Here you'll see that students have both science and social studies following a very similar middle school um, schedule. Recession and lunch, the accelerate block we're also implementing at the middle high school will follow lunch. So that gives the students in fifth and sixth grade a nice break in their day. Um, they, and this may, it would, might vary. They could have specials instead of social studies, period three. Um, but I wanted you to see that there are three dedicated periods to something that's not the core content areas. As well as then we've got the core content areas um, maintaining their place in the overall day as well. Again, consistency, we're looking at consistency K eight. Um, and in K six, we will have the same um, per- familiar nine period day. So that makes those students moving to West Amwell comfortable with the daily schedule. Um, our fifth and sixth graders right now shift, switch classes. So that will be something else that they will be familiar with. Again, another focus on ELA and math. Um, the acceleration block in our fifth and sixth grade will be sixty minutes. We designed that because we know that we need to focus on providing support for our fifth and sixth graders. That gives us the opportunity for varied support. They, one stu- student could have twenty minutes of support with ELA. Could have twenty minutes of enrichment with math and then could have twenty minutes in their classroom. In another support or intervention or collaborative. So it gives us the opportunity to be able to service many subjects within that um, timeframe. Built-in passing time once again. Um, and the special areas where it's going to be different than the pre-K four is. There will be wellness every other day and whether that's PE or health, um, but that will be part of the schedule as well. Um, acceleration block, again, I just wanted to, I know this is a repeat of the slide, but the goals, the purpose and the data informed decision-making. Are um, and the ELA and math skills are really again, the foundation. I'll speak a little bit, since I didn't do it on the last slide, to the data informed decision-making. Um, through regular progress monitoring, we're going to be able to know where students are and exactly what they need. And then provide supports and interventions. Um, and when I speak about supports or interventions, it may be a twenty minutes extra with their math teacher. To review whatever the skills are that are on the upcoming quiz. Or it may just be the opportunity to spend a little bit more time working collaboratively on a performance task. Which is a multi, it has multi steps to it. It's a collaborative problem solving. Um, and so it gives teachers the flexibility to really build what students need during that time period. It differs from flex seven-twelve in the sense that um, flex is really driven by the students and the teachers requesting. We will be the adminis- the, not the administration, but the teachers and I guess the administration as well, will be making most of those decisions for the student. That's not to say that a sixth grader couldn't say, oh, can I go, um, you know, meet with Ms. Hart about math? And we will certainly have that flexibility as well. We want to provide flexibility, but we also want to provide the structure because this is very new. And we want to make sure that we set the expectations. Um, and sort of as I talk about, those guardrails are in place and then you can move down the road anyway you need to, within the speed limit. But you understand the point that with the structure and um, the programming that we're planning. It makes it much easier for students to know what the expectations are as well as teachers. So I just want to shift now. I know that when I um, met with the district parent council. And then with the curriculum kit committee of the board, there was a lot of questions about what does learning acceleration? First of all, what does acceleration mean? And what is learning acceleration in terms of what the state of New Jersey is saying? New Jersey is saying that we realize that there's a lot of unfinished learning. So I know for a while the word was um, achievement gap or learning loss. Well, they, as I worked with a colleague in my previous district, he said there was no learning loss. Students are exactly where they're supposed to be, where they are based on having spent two years in a pandemic. So we have shifted a little bit of our thinking to say, this is unfinished learning. So where are students now and what is that unfinished learning? And that can be anything. And it also shifts to an asset-based thinking as opposed to a deficit-based thinking. So the state of New Jersey has put together a learning acceleration plan and expectation for every district. So even though this is new to South Hundreden, um, and new to many districts. There are guidelines that are put into place and principles and practices. So I just wanted to share that this is um, this is a recommendation from the state. So most of the principles in action that the state has. So most of the principles in action that the state has put in place are things that we are already doing. We put them down on paper just to make it sound good, but these are things. We're building trusting relationships. We're establishing positive and stable environments. We're explicitly teaching critical academic skills using integrated approach. And we're designing learning experiences that activate student knowledge and build student interest and prior knowledge. So all of those words together are things that we're already doing. We now want to make sure that we now have the time and the place to do that um, explicitly and systematically. And that's really where the high impact approach and the accelerate block come in. So I'm gonna, it's a little, um, you might not know why I'm shifting, or I'm going to tell you why I'm shifting to talk a little bit about the high impact tutoring program. And that is because that is the model we're going to use for the acceleration block. We found it so successful with the program we used called iReady, um, which some of you that have um, family members or been exposed to other districts know that iReady is a program um, that has been around for a while, but they have really um, stepped up their game to meet these needs of students in school districts with unfinished learning. So it is um, partly a personalized learning plan in the sense that the students will take an iReady diagnostic test. So we'll know exactly what unfinished learning a child may have. And then it also provides the lessons to support the diagnostic that are grade level skills. So really, this was the foundation of our high impact tutoring after school. Um, so I'm going to give you a little bit of a background and some of the data from our high impact tutoring, because I want you to put it into the context of what this would look like during a school day. New Jersey recommends the most successful high impact tutoring are those programs that happen during the school year. So I know that's a little bit of hard for some of us to wrap our heads around because the word tutoring, we think about Huntington Learning Center, or we think about after school tutoring. Um, but it really just means one on one or differentiated small group instruction. So these are just some of the things that it looked like during our high impact tutoring. Um, and again, I just want to highlight that it was thirteen weeks and two hours a week. So that was Wednesdays and Thursdays after school. So some of the data you're going to see in the results, um, think about that. Think about how students or children come home or after school and they are tired. Um, they are, I can't believe I have to do more of this, but I'm going to be here and we're going to make it fun. And we're going to highlight and we're going to really show you what you know. So I will go ahead and go into a little bit more. So this is really just a little bit about, so because of those principles in action that we put into place, we established a trusting and stable environment. Ninety percent of the students came to um, or had ninety, we had ninety percent attendance rate. We had a hundred percent attendance rate for the teachers, minus one that had a previous engagement. And I know in the past that was not the case. So a hundred percent of the teachers came a hundred percent of the time and we had ninety percent of the students come. You will see a little bit, I have three student stories and you'll see that the typical growth is for an annual goal. So when you look at what the annual goal or excuse me, typical, the growth was of these students, think about, this is something when we met with iReady on Friday, they were like, you did this in thirteen weeks, not a hundred and eighty days. So students met their typical growth seventy eight percent in math and eighty eight percent in reading. Lessons passed, again, you might not have a perspective, but two hundred and sixty one is a big number for the number of lessons in thirteen weeks and seventy seven in reading. And again, we only um, propose, we only use the reading program for our third graders because it was their first exposure with the student at JSLA. And then we had some anecdotal data from families that their math confidence, I know that um, at the PTO meeting last week, I know that it was shared that one of the members' child was so excited. They'd always gotten Cs, they're now getting Bs and As, and they feel confident in their mathematical ability. Students asked if they could do it at home, um, unheard of, but because we developed that relationship and that environment and that positivity, students felt like they could continue on with that. So I just have three stories. I have an A, a B and a C. The first student was um, success story is, I'll just go ahead and give you some of the highlights. This was a special education student in fourth grade. We invited all students in third, fourth and fifth because we were so small and the funds allowed it. When the student came in and took the diagnostic in um, January, the student was scoring at a grade one level. Um, you can see that by mid-April, this was given um, about two weeks ago, the student was at a grade three level. Um, the student was predicted to score a level two and testing not proficient. The student is now projected um, to score a level three. Um, some of the conclusions, thinking about if you'd given the student another three to four months in this program, that would be putting them at grade level. So thinking about how we moved a student who in January was grade one, according to the iReady diagnostic, giving them additional time with the program and the structure we set up, they would be on grade level. That's pretty amazing. Student B was a new third grader that just entered the district in September. These are true stories, just so you know. Um, we identified the student as a cusp student. Um, they were close to grade level, but as of January, not projected to obtain proficiency on the state test. They came in and they were early grade three, which made sense because they were a third grader, but they were just predicted based on the iReady diagnostic to score a level three. Remember, level four is meeting expectations where we want our kids to be and level five is exceeding. Um, this student and jumping down is now predicted to score a level four on the state test meeting proficiency. Um, this student made significant gross, um, typical growth, increasing twenty nine points in the second diagnostic. Again, what we did in thirteen weeks is remarkable. And lastly, this was a sixth grade student who was approaching expectations um, last year with a three. Um, so again, mid-grade five, predicted to score level three, took the test, um, the second diagnostic and then went up from four ninety one to a five twelve and is predicted to score a level four on the state mastery. Um, we dove in a little bit deeper to understand exactly where and what domain. So it goes specific to understand what specifically. Um, so as of April, the student is now projected to be proficient at level four on the state test next month. Um, so really, I know this was a lot of information about the tutoring program, but I want you to know that this is the model we're going to put forward as we look at our acceleration blocks. So I know I talked a lot about students going out and receiving maybe ESL services or enrichment services. But the question that's always come up is, well, what are they going to do in the classroom? What is, is the teacher just having a study hall? No, the teacher will be using iReady and the students who are not being pulled will be on iReady. A student will not be pulled five days a week, forty minutes a day. So there will always be time and for this, for all students to be on iReady and to be working on both the My Path, which is a personalized plan. And they're working at their own pace. And then they'll also be part of small group instruction. And um, Tony, if you could go back a couple of slides to the accelerate block, I just want to show you, these were taken from tutoring. That's um, this was our sixth grade tutoring session and this was an example. Some, there's two students right there. Another three students are actually on the computer working in My Path. And the teacher is then working with those two students based on a skill or strategy they need. Um, and then, then the other one was a teacher working with three students, a small group in third grade. So I know there was a lot of information and there are a lot of words on those slides, but I um, invite you to spend some time reading them over. And then um, as always, feel free to email me. Um, I'd be happy to explain them further. I'd be happy to meet and talk more about them. Um, we will be doing more information um, in the beginning of the year. And then I will be providing um, information for teachers to share again at back to school night when you're in the classrooms meeting with your children's teachers at that time.
Um, I, first, I do, I do want to say this slideshow, oh, we're not, are you guys not done?
Do I say?
No, thank you. Again, this is many, many layers and a lot of time and work, so it's still a work in progress. But I appreciate having all the support that you're giving.
I was just going to say that I know Jane O'Malley did a wonderful job talking about iReady and the acceleration period. That's been the most common question from adults. Uh, five, six, the most common question from children, as you may predict, is yes, we still have recess built into that.
Lots of recess, yes.
Oh, I just want to mention that the, the slideshow is going to be posted online on a website. The budget slideshow will also be posted online on the website. And I, if, if, if Tony is uh, following his typical practice, he'll probably be emailing those things out to people as well, so. Um, but before we let you go, I'm going to ask the board if you guys have any questions. There's a lot covered there on either the schedule, the high impact learning or, or the uh, the iReady program. Um, there's any board members that have questions, Jen.
What, what, can you talk a little bit more specifically what the accelerated acceleration block would look like for students? Like higher achieving students who, you know, are meeting or exceeding and what are we, what are we gonna, like, what does that look like?
Absolutely. So there'll be lots of opportunities for, so the students to do projects. So if they're working in reveal math and there is, every one of our math programs is wonderful now because it has so many different extensions to it. So you can have enrichment projects, you can have project based learning. You could have um, the support, there's many different layers to it. So there may be three students who um, are excelling in the fraction unit and they may be working on one of the projects and one of the performance tasks or a project that's built into reveal. That's using all of the information they've learned in unit eleven and work that way. Um, I know a great extension for ELA is also book clubs. In wit and wisdom, their core text, but they're also additional reading texts. So we will have those in the classrooms and the library. So if there is a group of fifth graders who um, you know, are set with their vocabulary and comprehension and all the things that they feel comfortable with, and the teacher feels like a book club would be a great opportunity for them to extend their thinking, have some opportunities with critical thinking and collaboration, we certainly will build those in. So it's got a lot of different, it's a, it's a huge menu à la carte. Um, but I know that for parents and teachers, there's always like, well, but what is it really going to look like? So there will be lots of different, it'll be the place where if we dream it, we can make it happen. Um, so it's really that, um, there may be, you know, if we have an environmental club, um, you know, there may be students that come together that might want to do that and then they could meet once um, during that time. We want the focus to be both academic, but also this is the opportunity for social and emotional learning.
Good, yeah, I think that would be good if we, so when we move to five eight, that will then be acceleration. Well, we're thinking in the middle school, the new building, we're doing that, right?
Yes.
And so for current middle school and high school, how we do flex now, do we also see flex as being data driven and, and things like that too?
Yep.
Like currently, or is that, are we moving towards that, or is that what we, is that how we have flex set up now that we're like right now, the kids, they have flex, it's using how they're doing in various classes and things like.
Yes, absolutely. So it is academically driven and I will, if you want to add anything.
Come on up.
It is, it is certainly academically driven. So it's both support, it's both enrichment, it's um, but we also know that the, looking at K eight, we may be making some revisions to flex and what it looks like and how we can support the students' needs. Um, and moving to five eight, the following year, we, we know there'll be an accelerate block, but accelerate, but it may look a little different than two. Um, right now, that five, six is really straddling what we're doing in elementary, continuing with the academic programs we have in place, but also making sure that we have the support. We know fifth and sixth graders, we need to, their student achievement scores are something that we meet, need to dive into so that when they do move on to seven, eight, they have all of the foundational skills they need as they move to middle school and then to high school.
And is that, when the, when do the kids for the fifth and sixth schedule, when do they do like band and music lessons? Is that all, is that during that period as well?
Well, we haven't ironed all of that out yet. Um, you can see that.
Usually a special period.
Yep.
Specials is like art.
Music.
Music, but I'm talking like band, like your instrument lesson.
Yep.
That usually, right, like sometimes kids end up getting pulled out of.
Instrument, yep. Instrument lessons, I will say, are very challenging to schedule all instrument lessons within the acc- ac- accelerate block. But that's not to say that band may be scheduled during the accelerate block, whereas you can bring many students together. But if you've got flute for three people or trumpet for two, it's difficult to do. So that, that is something that um, is always a trade off. Mm-hmm.
And for this tutoring, um, do we have an idea of what percent, like, how many students it was offered and the percentage that took, took us up on that offer?
Well, it changed. Um, so our initial offering um, didn't, we had the opportunity to expand it. So as we extended that initial opportunity, we realized that with more talking to the state, with more teachers that we could get, with the money that we were given, we sort of made that decision before we had all of the responses back. Um, and so initially, it was going to be students that were just on what we called the cusp because we really wanted to move those level threes to four and five. And then we realized, you know what, let's open this up to as many people as students as we can because we have those resources. Um, and so I don't have those percentages of the initial invitation because what happened was then it became, oh, well, I'm encoding until the end of February. Can I come to tutoring after that? And we said, yes. We really didn't turn anyone away because we were really excited about trying this program. Um, so in that sense, we don't have that data. We've got a lot of achievement data and we have a lot of attendance data, but I don't have, I invited, you know, fifty people and thirty said yes.
Yeah, I'm just, because in my, I'm just wondering if we looked at, were there any barriers to people who, who maybe could have or should have participated, but they didn't for any reason.
There's a lot of conflicts after school. Um, it was. Yes, we, we absolutely. If somebody said we're gonna, we're done, um, or that we want to come in later, absolutely. Um, we really tried to, you know, throw the net and get as many students as we could. There was really no point in turning anyone away at any given time. Um, and I, you know, I really have to commend the teachers because when you get a student after working with a group five weeks into the program, um, and they're like, sure, absolutely, join us, you take the diagnostic and here's what we're doing. Um, you know, that's a lot of flexibility and that's a lot of, you know, really being committed and dedicated to our students here in South um, and doing whatever they need.
Now, the question of barriers really, you know, also informs why our future commitment is during school day.
Yes, right, exactly, exactly.
If there was some estimates for the three students scenario that you gave us, will people just about enter into technical people be able to compare back to the estimated performance?
Yes, absolutely. Oh, that's all part of the data. Yep, absolutely, absolutely. One accommodation we did make just to, you know, thinking about um, some of those barriers, we walked students from uh, Lambertville LOL to Lambertville Academy. We eve- so even students that were already in after school programs that couldn't, um, parents couldn't pick them up. Um, one of the instructional coaches, uh, I did it for the first two days, but then she took over and she would walk the students from um, the elementary school to the academy. So, you know, we really tried to do everything we possibly could. I talked to the Lambertville library librarian to say, here's what we're doing. Um, you know, if there was any support that they could give, um, at the library, we did that. Uh, we really were sort of all hands and see what we could do. Michael.
So I really think one of the things that I keep hearing from you was the data informed decision making and how we have all of these great technology resources that are happening right now. I love that, but I also, in talking in committee, I'd, I'd love to kind of bring out how that enables the human to human contact. So how this is the right time for the district to be doing this because all of our teaching partners are going to be coming together. So if, if you could just.
Sure.
Talk a little bit more about it.
Absolutely. And that was something, um, and I'm also very hesitant about computers. I would, you know, I would rather have a teacher sit and talk to a child, um, to know them as a learner and understand whatever may be um, inhibiting them from reaching their highest potential. Um, but then also making sure that we understand our gifted students. Um, and how we can stretch them and um, allow them to grapple. So what we did that was very important with the tutoring program, um, that I felt very strongly was, we weren't going to adopt an I, you know, a computerized program um, and say, okay, here, just go on this for forty minutes. So we were very thoughtful. We had a ten minute snack and then we moved into fifteen to seventeen minutes. Um, half the students, and there was five or six in a group, would do the individualized and the other um, three or four would meet with the teacher. And the meetings with the teacher were small group, as you saw, Mr. Kanek, he was doing, teaching a lesson on something that the child needed based on their diagnostic. So we balance. On something that the child needed based on their diagnostic. So we balanced it with closing gaps. And finishing some learning with the My Path, which is the personalized learning. And then um we we made sure that they met with the teachers and it was small group instruction. And we actually, we really don't have that many um ed tech programs that the students are on during the day. Um wit and wisdom won't have any tech component to it unless the students are typing a document and they're writing. The math, the reveal math, um the skills review or some of the other problems online. Are again, part of small group instruction. So we and I Excel we're using right now because we have it. And we wanted to see how we could close some guests gaps on our state test. So there is a very. There's a balance because I don't want kids on computers. They're going to be on their devices like we are for the rest of their lives. Um and so especially in elementary school and five, six, they need to have that interaction.
I just thought it was related. So one, you mentioned Mr. Kanek, him coming down.
Yes.
Work with the sixth graders, actually just gave them access to just another human who might be able to connect with them another way. And I think now that our our district has come together as great levels. They can also connect with those teaching partners. So if there's a third grade teacher who maybe can take a small group and it's not the primary teacher.
Yes.
This program enables.
Yes, yes, right. So I could see maybe a second grade team, one classroom, maybe the teacher decides that she's going to run. Um foundations group, another teacher decides she's going to run the extension math group. Um one teacher may have individualized book clubs or the students are on their personalized learning path or doing something, you know, work. So it does give that flexibility. So again, we will give the teachers like those guardrails. The the three grade level, the three grade level teachers, you are welcome to figure this out, but here's what we need. Here's your data. You can make it work any way you want. You might do that for a marking period. You might do it for five weeks. So there's really a lot of possibilities um. To think about and you know, the first year maybe, okay, here's the way we're going to do it just because we got to wrap our heads around this and then it'll evolve just like flex did. You know, we pivot and we make changes based on the feedback.
Um it seems like the tutoring program went went nearly well and we had really great results from it. I guess what my question, I have a couple of questions, but my first one is. Um how will the program offered in the school and the acceleration program? Differ from how was executed in the after school program? It seems like maybe the groups were quite small. I don't know how many teachers participated in working with students in the after school tutoring program. If I sense that there were a number of them, um I'm wondering if the groups, the small group structure will be as small. And whether there will be less of the one on one kind of interaction in the class.
Actually, no, because as we go back to class size and we look at fifteen students, um so if you have a class of fifteen and. Two go, maybe two are leaving for some ESL support, maybe two are leaving for enrichment support. Um one's going to band, you may be left with seven students. So those seven students, three could be working on my path, three could be working with the teacher. Um I don't, again, even with twenty one, I can see that. There could be um some different schedules set up. As we said, the five, six is sixty minutes. So it could be twenty, 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 it could be thirty and thirty, it could be any type of configuration that works to support learning. And it's data driven. So again, all of these decisions need to be made based on students and the progress they're making. Um and then it can look very differently. We'll also have all the intervention teachers. So our standards with support teachers are now part. Of the equation as well. And so they may be pulling a small group or they may be going in. Um to a classroom to be another another teacher in the room. And so now you have two teachers in one classroom.
Well, special education teachers.
Special education teachers as well. Exactly. So you already in many, one classroom and. Um of the three in pre K four, we'll have two teachers anyway. So and then you have another special ed teacher who might be servicing some resource room to children that's either going to push in or pull out. Um so I don't, I don't foresee the groups being bigger.
It kind of kind of leads me to a second question I had, which is, um. Will the students, and this is for the acceleration period again, will will they? Have the opportunity to do different things throughout the week or if you have a kid, for example, who, you know. Who needs the extra help in math, let's say, right? And that's the best use and that's the data set. Is that kid going to be in the math have five days a week or, you know, day after day? Or will there still be an attempt to kind of, you know, expose that students in different.
Absolutely. Because whatever, if the student needs extra support in math, they may be, they may. Um they may be classified or qualify for enrichment activities. So they may be doing math work on Monday and Wednesday and they may be doing enrichment on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And then maybe they're working on a project um on Friday. So I don't see it being, you're going to. You're going to have five days a week of solid math for forty minutes or sixty minutes. It I mean, we know, we know the students.
Period of math every day, right?
Yes, absolutely. So again, we're designing based on the needs and, you know, we know. There'll be a new ELA program which will take some getting used to for all of the students and teachers. So that will be different. We've got new buildings. We've got new, and there's just a lot going on. So we want to be able to provide the flexibility. Um you know, and teachers may be doing, um you know, community building one day a week. Where they may spend twenty minutes doing a morning meeting circle um or a circle after lunch. Um or yoga or breathing. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want us to to lose sight of why it's in place. But we also are still working with the same kids we're working with this year. And we know that for anyone to be successful, they have to have. That social emotional foundation.
That's great. It sounds really exciting. It all sounds like.
It is. It is. It is. It is. But we're used to that. I mean, that's something we do with, do all the time.
And I have one another one, which is now when you have the schedule set for the five, six. It kind of seems like they have a full period of lunch and a full period of recess. Maybe I was reading it.
I think it's six and six A. And again, those are just samples without times. Yeah. So they have sixty minutes?
Currently, they have sixty minutes. Uh I think it's it's proposed right now fifty here.
For so a fifteen minute.
For lunch and.
Combined, yeah.
Correct.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um and uh. And I have another question, which is whether or not the acceleration period was going to extend to seven, eight, once the middle school.
Yes. Yes, 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 absolutely. Any other questions? Great.
Thank you very much. Um folks, if you have questions in the audience, so now is the time. Uh we'll open our first period of public comment. Um do you want to comment on any item on the agenda? If you have questions about the presentation. Um we will try, Miss Lennon is here, we will try to answer those. Um uh we would ask that you again, um come up to the podium, tell us your name, the community that you're from. And try to keep your question or your statement to the board at at three minutes or less. Um and we will, uh we will leave it open until everyone's had a chance to ask their questions. Uh that said, the uh public comment period is open. Does anyone have something they'd like to bring before the board?
And I usually do this, but Taylor Lavo, um teacher at West Hamwell and one of the presidents of the SHREA. Earlier this month, the South Hundred and Regional Education Education Association hosted our annual family literacy night. The event was attended by over one hundred district families. Children had the chance to participate in many different activities that promoted literacy in fun ways. Such as storytelling, improv and karaoke. A Philadelphia-based graphic novelist, Jamar Nicholas, presented an interactive workshop and signed copies of one of his novels for all students who participated. Additionally, the children had the opportunity to take home as many as forty five hundred books. Um and they could take as many books as they wanted. Uh the SHREA would like to thank the Amwell Lodge Number Twelve Free and Accepted Masons for their generous co-sponsorship. We're also very grateful for the support provided by the district, Board of Ed and the administration. Um please be on the lookout for our elementary summer reading initiative that's coming out next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh are there any?
Hello, Denise Bayla, West Hamwell. Um I have a question about the um AP courses and everything. Um it's great to see so many like offerings for the students. So the school pays the universities like for the college credits if they pass? Is that how that works?
No, so the for the dual enrollment, students or parents would pay. What I said is that if we had students who obviously had a financial hardship. We have looked to build some money into our budget to be able to assist with that.
Oh, okay. So it's the same, is it the same rate as you were like would be paying for tuition?
So right now, the uh, no, it's a lot cheaper. So for Rowan, I think it's three hundred dollars. For a dual enrollment course and for TCNJ, it's five fifty.
Oh, so like a normal course would probably be around three thousand dollars if you were attending like in college. Okay, well, that's that's great. Um but a note on the TCNJ, so they don't go by credits, they go by units. And um one credit doesn't like equal one unit, like they have a really weird way of felt like, you know. So what my, obviously I have a student at TCNJ and he tried to take classes elsewhere. And it was going to be really difficult to transfer. Um it was almost like he had to take two classes elsewhere to transfer into one. So it's something to just kind of look at. Um. Also, in going down to the softball fields, um I'm realizing there may be a problem in the fall with the Lambertville Bridge being closed. Um like the one direction traffic has been like atrocious. So when the school opens, like there may be a very large bottleneck every morning, like drop offs or um pickups. So I don't know if you need to work with the police department on like traffic patterns because it's, I think if you're probably going to come into some problems. Um and then lastly, on behalf of the softball team, the coaches, the parents. Thank you very much for fixing the uh transportation issue. So it's very much appreciated. We love that we have our own bus driver getting. The girls to the field on time. So it's helping tremendously. So thank you.
You're welcome.
There are any other questions uh for the board?
Jessica Hartigan, West Hamwell. I I have just a question. Am I allowed to ask Jay now, Leonard? Um just not to harp on the acceleration thing. And I know you said it's data driven, but. Is it at the student's discretion or the teacher's discretion or and how do they manage that with having like fifteen to twenty kids? Because I know given the option, my current fifth grade boy is not going to pick that, but. Okay. And are they in that alone? Because that seems like a lot of extra work to do or that that does the program do it for them? Like the like the I ready, that's what you follow?
Yes, do they, are they in it? They would be, so it would be like they would, they might spend fifteen, seventeen minutes. On their own doing math, you'll read whatever that I read, let's see, based on their diagnostic. And then based on their diagnostic, the teacher may say, okay, so we're going to review adding some practice, practice with next numbers. So I'm going to take the preview and when they're going to come over here. So if not one on one per se, it would be just a daily teacher math lesson. Right? They teach the math lesson and the teacher may say, okay, I will keep the preview right here with me. Let me, like in the beginning, because it looks like. You all go do independent work and you all come back. If you start, I would check in if you have.
Okay. Yeah, I just was wondering, has it, I just wanted to make sure about.
Typically, when we see a class, there are trends. So we look for trends. Not everybody's coming into the exact same data point. But we can say, oh, well, this group of kids needs this. So we can look at that trend. This group of kids need this and this group of kids could do that. It's been sometimes you're an outlier, it's not the bottom or the team, and you meet those needs, but typically, then we look at trends so we can develop all of that.
And then just to kind of piggyback off of what Denise said, so um I know with like sporting events and stuff downtown at Ely. The Bridge Commission has been very responsive to helping with traffic patterns and putting signs up and having like. The bridge monitors do certain things. So I'm sure.
Yeah.
My father-in-law would definitely help with that.
Good. Thank you.
Um I just want to piggyback on that real quick. Mrs. McKnight, at the high school, the the flex program is largely teacher driven also. Is that not correct?
Well, there's a combination of it. Actually, there there's a lot that goes into it. Um we actually have a program up here. Um it's called efficiency that um that helps. Um with this algorithm of teacher-student movement, um et cetera. So we have student requests, we have teacher requests, and we have actually administration uh push into the classes. So on a, on a daily basis, middle school um and high school, because it uh it has been a work in progress. I mean, we started out, I I could probably take a lot more time, but we started out in the beginning of the year with the entire school district. In one huge set in efficiency. And probably about a month in, we realized that we needed to split that out for the fact that we were getting some kids that were bubbling into either the high school. And or the middle school flex. But I would say off the top of my head, just even looking at flex this morning. Um uh teachers are required um on a daily basis to um choose six students. Um for various reasons, whether it is makeup work, whether it's acceleration, whether they are on the Ds and Fs list that we have, et cetera. Um and as well as kids that are extracurricular or need to make up work or were absent, you know. There's that algorithm that they set their seats for six in a day. They might pull three, three might request. Now, we do have also, we have the flowovers, right, where there might be a kid, right, that just does not want to that day, right? They're caught up on their work, they're not on the Ds left, Ns list, the teacher's not pulling them, et cetera. They could possibly be in our yoga or in our gym or in the silent study halls, et cetera. So so there's a lot of play that go goes into it.
Thanks for explaining that again.
When, when with that extra uh on course stuff, will parents have a little more visibility to what kids are doing with their flex time? Is that one of the things that you could do or?
Uh not with him on course as far as specifically. Yeah. Because it does kind of change every day. And the way that efficiency is set up, the teacher piece overrules the student piece. So if a teacher really needs a student for, let's say, additional math support, but the student wants to go to yoga. They're going to go, yeah, so that's going to overrule and they're going to go to get extra math support.
It would be, it would probably be good for parent information if they can go into the, uh you took yoga three times this week, but.
We do have the ability to run that out of the C. Basically, each student's request and kind of where they're landing on a weekly basis. Yeah.
Absolutely. And it's also since we are the first year into this brand new schedule, as well as flex and efficiency and all of the above. They are points that we will be looking at, uh you know, in marrying hopefully those systems.
Do parents get notified when a kid is being pulled, being requested by a teacher for extra help in a particular sub?
Um not through the the efficiency system for the fact that it doesn't speak to on course at this um at this moment in time. But um if, in all honesty, if a parent was to call or email and say. Hey, you know, I kind of want to know what my my student is up to or who's being, who's pulling my student and for what reasons. Our guidance counselors are more than happy to to go through that, go through that data.
Students, I'll get an email every morning that lets them know what they'll be attending for flex. So that is something the parents could look at as well, their district email.
Thank you. Um any other questions from the public? Do we have any online question?
No.
Uh in that case, uh if there are no other questions right now, there will be a second public comment period later in the meeting. But I'm going to close this period of public comment and we'll move on to our committee reports. Uh then we will start with the buildings, grounds, transportation, finance and safety. Uh Ms. Warner is not here tonight.
Okay, all right.
So we met on April eighteenth. We started with a discussion about health benefits, medical and dental. We are going to continue with American Health and Dental. Um at a seven percent increase and a three point nine percent increase respectively. We did a final budget review, which tonight's. We also had an update for construction. We discussed. We also had an update for construction. We discussed the elementary school, just ongoing progress, change orders. Same thing with the middle school, ongoing progress, change order. We discussed the potential for some delay costs, cost due to the delay of construction start date. Going to come for that in May. We also discussed the upgrades to the well room, where we're at, flight that's slightly delayed, expected completion dates, and also, as Mr. Suzo said earlier, talking about the athletic field expansion. We reviewed the contracts that were up for approval. We discussed the twenty-twenty-four NJ Six Safety Grant Award for fifty-nine hundred dollars, which will be put towards putting bus cameras on the newest bus, bus twenty-five. And then we also discussed the resolution to approve change orders and construction, payment authorization, transfers, and the NJ on investment, like, interest earned as of April eighteenth was one million nine hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. The RFP for the Kids Service Management Company has been posted with a fit opening date in May. And we also discussed parent bus drop-off at South Hundred and Regional Elementary School for next year, and that safety committee.
Okay. With that, I'll need someone to make a motion to approve items A through Q on the agenda. So a second from Kevin, thank you. Any discussion on items A through Q? There is no discussion. Let's vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Senator Bacher?
Yes.
Johnny Tavarino?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Personnel committee.
The personnel committee met virtually on April seventh. At that committee meeting, we reviewed the personnel action agenda for this meeting, including the superintendent's recommendations for appointments, recognition, requirements, requests for extended use and absence, recommendations for non-tenure renewal, recommendations for the DM rates for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four school year, and also, some recommendations for a new position of district data manager in special projects. Also, at that meeting, the committee reviewed recommendations for extra work feelers stipend appointments for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year, which is also on Actionite Monolith's agenda. We went over, we've heard openings in the district, many of which are filled, and the appointments that are giving place tonight. There are two open commissions currently for a chemistry teacher at the high school and a future agriculture at the middle school, high school. We, excuse me, we reviewed and discussed salary increases for the non-representative employees in the district for twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five. And finally, we are updated on the status of the rush driver summary.
Excellent. So would you like to make a motion to approve?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that has president superintendent's recommendation, the board of personnel action.
Motion for the second, please. Second by Martha, thank you. Any discussions?
Like the Strauss?
Yes.
Senator Bacher?
Yes.
Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Johnny Tavarino?
Yeah.
Yes. Curriculum and Technology.
Our curriculum and technology met April ten. A lot of this is gonna be repetitive. So everything that's been discussed this evening, I apologize, it seems like every meeting, it's repetitive. So progress is continuing to be made. Data migration is continuing to parents' grade class line. Pre-K through four, looking at dates when they can move out of St. John's into the new elementary school. And progress is ramping up quickly up here in the school. Spring ELA training was April twentieth, and again, May seventh, included the first witness and training. NJ SLA test prep activities and the parent information session discussed April twenty-third. First staff was, and that was staff, make sure that all resources were given, so that you make sure the students are set up for success. The parent information slide deck and the Zoom meeting, the Zoom meeting recording are posted on the What's New page on the regional webpage. So if you go to the top of the South Hundred and Regional School District website, there's a news. And then under that is What's New, and that makes you come to see there. We discussed the summer curriculum rating, including the elementary school STEM classes, middle and high school theater program, and what those classes are gonna look like, and using, potentially using other districts as a guide. High school art classes, allowing more entry points for students to get involved in art, high school egg, and food science, web design, and anatomy and physiology, as discussed previously. These are being rewritten for the old one. And the parent rollout of elementary schedule. And the district parent council was beginning of April, was discussed this evening. And I did have a note I heard that there'd be a Zoom meeting set up, and they, they can answer the questions. I have nothing to move.
Okay, thank you. Oh, no, I'm sorry, policy.
Policy met virtually on April sixteenth. The first read of Regulation twenty-two-hundred on curriculum content, this is a mandated change, requires a course of study, and that section requires course of study and instructional materials of programs to be designed to eliminate discrimination on the basis of many protected categories. This was just a change to, to the reference of what protected categories are now listed in the New Jersey statutes. We also did a review of seventy-five twenty policies, seventy-five twenty-three, school district provided technology devices for students. The committee members reviewed recent data on problem usage and discussed including a guiding statement for the use of technology, while technology is important, flexibility in using those tools. And there is some suggested language that the superintendent has put forward, and we will address prior second read. We do have two items that work for the second read. The first is both the policy and the regulation fifty-one-eleven, eligibility of non-resident or resident, non-resident students. These were both mandated as a reminder, there were revisions to New Jersey statute eighteen A thirty-eight dash three, which requires amendments to the relevant policy and regulation. It does continue those to allow the Board of Education to approve admission of students into the school district who do not reside in the school district, and to address certain enrollment scenarios that may arise, such as charging tuition for a student moving into the district after the first day of the school year. The recommendation of the superintendent is that South Hundred and Regional School District will not charge tuition in the following circumstances, where a non-resident student whose parent or guardian anticipates school district residency and has entered into a contract to buy, bill, or rent for residence in the school district may be enrolled for a period of time not greater than eight weeks prior to the anticipated date of residency, as long as transportation is provided by the parent or guardian. And also, students whose parent or guardian have moved away from the school district on or after March first, and twelve-year students who parent, parent authority and have moved away from the school district on or after September first, will be permitted to finish the school year as long as transportation begins provided by the parent or guardian. And then the second read is some minor changes to policy section twenty-four eleven on guidance counseling. So I would like to, with the changes to policy fifty-one-eleven, I would like to move the both of those second reads to work.
So we have a motion, a motion to move both the first readings and the second readings.
Correct.
Great. Can we have a second on the action, please? Second by Michael, thank you. Any discussion on the first read and the second read? So obviously, the policies that are here for first reading, if you have the opportunity to look over them before the next board meeting, and if you have any questions, you can email your questions to Martha, who's the chair of the policy committee, and copy Mr. Suzo. I will note on the, the policy for second reading about the, the students, we, that actually was a situation that we had here a few years ago, where we had a student whose family moved out of the district, and we allowed him to spend the last two or three months in school. It would have been, he was a senior, and, you know, so he lived with a, he lived with another family in the community until he could graduate and then rejoin his own family. So it is not something that never happens. So I think it's good to have a, you know, a policy that allows for that, something that we've done historically. Any other comments on the policy? If not, then let's vote.
Senator Brian Keas?
Yes. Yes.
Senator Bacher?
Yes.
Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Senator Schein? Johnny Tavarino?
Yes.
Yes, and school and communities.
All right, so school and community met on April sixteenth virtually. We talked about the PTO reorganization meeting, which Hartigan gave us more detailed information about that. At that time, we were talking about resending the information to make sure that we had as much participation as we could get, and the administration's role in working with the PTO to provide feedback on student and classroom needs. We also reviewed a draft of the press release regarding the pre-K expansion and had some suggested revisions, but we will be putting that off for finalization after the May meeting, since there have been additional questions that have come to light from the community. And we want to make sure that we're highlighting and talking about the program as a press release, but also figuring out when, what, what questions are best addressed in a press release versus in the information sessions that we'll be hosting later on in the year. We talked about school mascots, and we were able to look at some of the mock-ups of the new school logos that were designed by students. And talked a little bit about colors and final designs that will be coming up in the next few months. And we looked at screen time. So we talked about the acceptable use of computers, iPads and other screens in the classroom, as the policy committee is also looking at, and really trying to decide where the line is between, you know, not wanting to be too prescriptive, but also to support teachers in the purposeful application of screens in classrooms. So that's something that we'll be continuing to discuss in policy. And there's nothing to move.
Okay. And we come to our routine information items. I will report that we did have fire drills, as required by law, at the middle school, high school, elementary school, both of the elementary schools. So those dates are in the agenda. There is, we, we do have a harassment, intimidation, and bullying report, which we'll be voting on right now. I just want to mention, so each meeting, we typically have a harassment, intimidation, bullying report that is voted on. We also go into an executive session, which we will be doing shortly, and that will be, this is, this covers the incidents from February or March?
That March.
Okay, this covers incidents from March. We will be going into executive session at the end of this meeting, and we will be discussing incidents that occurred in April. When we come out of that meeting, there will be no voting. We will vote on those in the next meeting. So that is kind of how the process for that works.
So every time we vote, we're actually voting?
We're actually voting on something that we've discussed at the previous month's meeting in the executive session. So with that, I do need a motion to accept the harassment, intimidation, and bullying report this month. So moved by Michael, thank you. Could I have a second, please? A second by Martha, thank you. Any discussion on the HIV report? And that is a voice vote, so all in favor can say aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Anyone who abstained? With that, we come to our second period of public comment for this meeting. Again, same rules apply. You're welcome to come and, and address the board on anything that you have a concern about. So are there any questions for the board for the second period of public comment? Do we have any online questions? If there are no questions for the board, then I will move that we close the period of public comment. As I just noted, we do have a need to go into a brief executive session. That will be no longer than thirty minutes, hopefully less. There will be no action taken after that meeting. So with that, can I have a motion during executive session at nine oh five? The move by Ronnie, second by Jeff. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
So we were welcome to.